Good evening. Since it is four o'clock, this meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission is called to order. Let's say the pledge first.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, when light may be under God, indiscernible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to read the ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or silence your ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you are attending in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and give it to the planning staff. Forms are on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are attending online and wish to speak, raise your hand in the team's chat and provide your name, address, and agenda item number you would like to address. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. Please mute your microphone until called. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the commission chair. Use the microphone to capture your comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities. At least six commissioners are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. Special use dockets. These dockets are approved by this commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are heard by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county's website. For additional assistance, contact Development Services. For other docket decisions than special use, they result in a recommendation forwarded by this commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. We observe the following time limits: three minutes for call to public, 10 minutes for applicant statement, three minutes for supporters or those opposed, and this can be adjusted by the chair, and five minutes for the applicant rebuttal. That's the last one, right? Thank you. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Limbach?
Present.
Mr. Montgomery? Here or online? Mr. Watkins is absent. Mr. Ambrose is absent.
I'm on the phone. Mr. Watkins is on the phone.
Mr. Watkins, is that you?
Yes, I'm on. I'm on my phone.
Thank you. Mr. Ambrose? Assuming he's absent. Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Ms. Thicket?
Present.
Mr. Martzki?
Present.
And Mr. Saunders?
Present.
Chair Dupew is present. We do have a quorum. This is the time we approve last month's minutes. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none?
Madam Chair, accept the evidence as a matter of fact.
Thank you very much. A second. Mr. Gonzalez, a second. Thank you. Let's do a voice vote. All those in favor of approving last month's minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any nays? Thank you. The minutes are approved. Before we begin, I want to share something that came into the commission. This is so unusual, I couldn't help sharing it. There's a card here. And this gentleman named Ted Haas said, "Dear Planning Commission Board, observing you all in action last night," that was in October, "was a wonderful thing to observe and behold. You have my praise and admiration. Thank you for your service to the people of Cochise County." I was so moved by that, I just had to share it.
Very nice.
I'll pass it along. Pretty nice. It was very nice. This is the time for call to public pursuant to ARS Section 38, 431.01H. This is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address this commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Are there any speakers to the public? Nobody online? Hearing none? We'll move on. Do we need to approve the calendar? Have you all reviewed the dates for 2026 calendar? Are there any comments? Conflicts? I did not see any, and I need a motion to approve the calendar.
I so move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor, could you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The calendar is approved. Staff, thank you very much. The first item tonight is docket SU 25-26. This is Charleston Road Container Sales. This docket is on the table. I need a motion to lift the docket from the table.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to remove docket number SU 25-26 from the table.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Martzki. I understand this application is being withdrawn by the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, and the applicant did request his application be withdrawn via email.
Is it appropriate that we vote again to approve that withdrawal, or that's done?
To make it official, the commission can vote on that.
Would someone move to approve the withdrawal of this item?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the withdrawal of docket SU 25-26, the container request.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders, could I have a voice vote approving the withdrawal?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Chair says aye. This is withdrawn from our schedule tonight. The next item is docket SU 25-28, Fawn Ranch. The applicant is Joseph Monks. Is Mr. Monks present? Thank you, sir. Could I have a motion, please, to approve docket SU 25-28?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve docket SU 25-28 with conditions recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the finding of effect.
Thank you. Second? Mr. Saunders, thank you. This is a time for discussion and public hearing. Mr. Taylor, your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket SU 25-28, a special use authorization request to reduce the minimum required setback for agricultural processing. The applicant is Joseph Monks. The property is located at 3465 East Fawn Ranch Road in Pierce. That would be tax parcel 11401073. Property is owned RU4 and is designated rural by the Comprehensive Plan. There is a vineyard, an active vineyard on the property. The applicant proposes a vineyard and a farm winery. The property is located at southwest corner of Kansas Settlement and Fawn Ranch Road in Pierce. The property is located within an area is owned RU4 with parcels ranging from 5 to 40 acres and sporadic single-family residential development. This is an image of the property viewing to the northeast with the property highlighted in yellow. This is also viewing to the northeast with a closer view of the developed portion showing the vineyard and the existing structure on the property. And one last image with Fawn Ranch Road in the foreground. This would be viewing to the south. The applicant has provided a site plan showing an existing 1,800 square foot structure which is proposed to be used for the farm winery. It measures approximately 100 feet from the north property line and 200 feet from the east property line, which is less than the minimum 300 feet required by the zoning regulations. Just wanted to go through a couple of terms here to clarify what the request is. Agricultural processing is defined by the zoning regulations, is the packaging, sorting, or grading of livestock or livestock products, or plants or plant products into goods for intermediate or final consumption. A farm winery is permissible by right onsite and is identified as an onsite agriculture use where grapes grown onsite are processed into wine. Production wineries are larger facilities. A small winery enables the processing of grapes grown offsite not to exceed 40,000 gallons of production per year, and a large allows grapes grown on or offsite, again, not exceeding 40,000 gallons per year. And tasting rooms are permitted on the same site as the farm or production winery and can include incidental retail sales of wine and related products. Just a little bit of background. Stated in the memo that the applicant did receive liquor license approval from the Board of Supervisors, and it was this site plan that was submitted to staff where the deficiency and the setback was noted and observed the first time, which is what recluded the special use application. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors to evaluate special use requests. In this case, nine factors apply. Again, the factors in favor of the special use complies with the applicable factors, of which there are nine, and staff has received support from nearby property owners. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor. The applicant sent letters as required by the zoning regulations on 22 September, and staff completed the notification process between 10 and 15 October. This is a notification app. Staff mailed 23 notices to property owners within 1,000 feet of this parcel. And staff received four written responses in favor from neighboring property owners. And Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 25-28. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I like the notification map. That's nice. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Mr. Monks? You have 10 minutes, sir. Please state your name and address.
My name is Joe Monks, officially Jillson Monks, 3465 East Fawn Ranch Road in Pierce, Arizona. This is my property here. I've established a vineyard there, and prior to requesting a farm winery license, I put the building in not knowing that there were setback requirements. Now that I've filed for the farm winery license, which has actually today has been approved by through the state, I'm requesting the setback so that I wouldn't have to put in another building for the processing of the grapes into wine. So that's why I'm requesting the permit.
Thank you. Is there any more?
Um.
You can share.
I don't, can't really think of anything else. If you have specific questions that I have, or that...
All right, sir. We'll call you back if we have questions.
Okay, thank you.
This is a time for public comments. Are there, is there anyone online? No one in the room? We'll pass on that. The applicant would have a response time. If there were comments, we'll waive that. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. It's this time for commission discussion. Do we have any questions of the applicant or staff? And I do have a couple. Mr. Monks, if you wouldn't mind coming back, these are just interesting questions for me. Are you living on site now, sir? Because I noticed you had a different address.
A part-time. So currently, my wife and I still live in Chandler, Arizona. I come down here three or four days a week to do the work at the vineyard itself. So that's why we have a living quarters in that building also, and so that's where I stay while I'm here. But I have another job in Chandler, which she is also a full-time job in Chandler, so that's why I'm traveling back and forth. Eventually, our plans are to retire down in this area and do the winery and the vineyard full-time.
Nice. Nice. It looks like a wonderful layout. What is your projected public traffic for your tasting rooms someday?
To be honest with you, very minimal. We don't expect people to come that far out for the tastings themselves. We're probably having it on appointment only. And if we wanted to increase the foot traffic, we'd probably have a tasting room in the Wilcox city area itself. So instead of having all of them come out to us, we would go to them. But we would probably leave it open for appointments if people want to come out and see the vineyard and have some tastings at that time.
Nice. Thank you for sharing that.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Mr. Taylor, your recommendation and summary, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 25-28 to allow agricultural processing with less than a 300-foot minimum setback with the following condition: agricultural processing activities exempt from minimum setbacks are limited to farm winery, distillery operations. Production wineries, distilleries, and animal-related processing are not exempt. And the standard conditions relative to permitting timelines, conditions acceptance, and modification of an approved special use are still in effect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? And we'll vote. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Thicket?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. It is approved, and congratulations, Mr. Monks. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk, at the office, or online at cochise.az.gov. This concludes our public hearings for the evening. We move on to Comprehensive Plan Draft Discussion.
And that's all. Really, what I want to do is hear from you guys more so than me tell you what it's about. So with that, Chapter 1 is the introduction and overview. We talk about the county a lot. It's past how we've evolved, who we are, what we do. We talk about our key challenges and opportunities. Specifically, we want to maintain our rural character while supporting growth. We need to address our aging infrastructure. We need to diversify our economy while at the same time protecting our water and natural resources and expanding housing, healthcare, broadband access. So that's a lot, and that's really how this document is focused. And how we got there is it's a data-driven plan, so looking at a lot of analysis, demographics, and also the community survey. So that's where we identified a lot of our challenges and opportunities. On the right-hand side, I provide a historical land use development, just overview, how we've evolved. And then on the next page, we get into more the demographics, community engagement, and the takeaways itself. So there's no recommendations within this section. However, it's an overview to the county. And I have gotten some really good written comments from Commissioner Dupew and Commissioner Limbach. One of the suggestions was to bring in more of discussion of the port of entry, which I thought was a really good idea. And how I thought we might do that is we have our past, our present, and so the next section would be our future. And that's how I bring in the importance of the port of entry and other like economic initiatives we need to focus on. So that's one way we can bring that in without doing an executive summary, which is still probably a good idea, but I might put that on the website rather than the document itself, so it's not as repetitive. But is there any other ideas for the first chapter, or any other suggestions? We'll move on. The next chapter is land use and growth, and this one is super, super important because this is where we have our future land use plan and map. This is what guides growth. It protects our natural resources, supports welfare, maintains our rural character. It's what we tried to do with the draft is better explain how our designations, our categories, they work together. We have our land use goals and policies. That's kind of the fundamental layer, our foundation. On top of that are our categories, and that's how we allocate. It's the growth pattern itself. Our infrastructure and density follows growth categories. So when we talk about growth category A, that's going to be in county islands. So like really close to Sierra Vista is primarily where we find growth category A right now. D is the majority of the county. B and C somewhat ring the other cities within the county. So our goals within this, I list on the right-hand side, there's nine of them. So it's all about smart growth, right places, investing in people, powering industry, showcasing Cochise, healthy land, healthy life, power from the sun, rocks, resources, resilience, high-flying, safety, grounded planning, every community counts, working landscape, balanced futures. So some of those are in response to just direct state requirements. We do need to take into account mining and the needs of that industry. So that's kind of what the rocks, resources, and resilience is about. The high-flying, safety, grounded planning, that's when we, that's how we talk about Fort Huachuca. They do have overlays, and those are mandated real estate disclosures. If you're within a certain distance of a military airport, that sort of thing. And it does impact what you can do on your property and how you develop. So we do include a bunch of maps and overlays and just considerations of that. So on the left-hand side is our land use map. This shows the different categories, developing all the way to rural residential. Rural is the largest category, which you can see, it's a light green color. What's different about this is we do include our table where it shows how land use and zoning kind of work together. Right now, we have this in our zoning regulations. We don't have this in our comp plan, but it's pretty useful. If somebody were to come in and rezone, this would tell us whether or not it's permitted or whether they would need a comp plan amendment. So based on that, I mean, were there any specific concerns with the land use chapter? That's a good 40 pages of the document itself. It's a lot.
I have a comment, and you've obviously read my written comments, but for the benefit of the board. When it comes to things like sustainable or renewable energy, and even mining, is it possible to put something in writing that mandates that these projects directly support the citizens of Cochise County? So for instance, if we're going to have a mine, rather than just mine materials and ship them out of the state or out of the country, if we're going to do that to our land, why not at least make it beneficial for Cochise County and have manufacturing like of batteries in Cochise County as opposed to shipping it out? And I know that's more of a state issue, but...
To a limited extent. So we can't necessarily restrict where energy or materials are used. We don't want to violate interstate commerce laws or anything like that, but we can encourage or favor projects that benefit the county. So there is language that we can add, and I think we should add, within that, just stating if it supports our local economy, either through voluntary local hiring or manufacturing within the county, something like that. You know, when feasible, or if it's projects that use locally produced materials or provide local workforce opportunities, we'll give it favorable consideration, especially like in a special use case. So I think that's a good recommendation.
It's good language.
When we get to circulation, this is, this is kind of everything. It starts with just walking, and it goes all the way through flying. It guides transportation planning period. So we include roads, rail, transit, airports, bikes, and pedestrian networks. We have maps of county-maintained roads, both paved dirt, primitive roads. We stress opportunities for partnerships, road improvement districts, railroads, we talk about those, potential for reuse, transit, urban fixed route, rural demand response, airports, we have nine of them. One of the suggestions in our last work session was to stress a little bit more the role of our two county airports. And so we've done that. Our bike and pedestrian network, we have urban networks, we have a lot of trails in the Sierra Vista area, as well as some of the other cities. We have US Bicycle Route 90 and the Sun Corridor Trail. Our goals here are preserving rails, promoting mobility, so addressing our rail network where we can. Aviation for growth and access, moving by foot and wheel, how we can promote pedestrian network and how we can make it more connective, connecting through transit, paving the way forward. This is where we talk about paving and how we can do it in a cost-effective way. And driving improvements through partnerships. Those are our main goals. On the right-hand side, I show our county-maintained roads, which can be added or deleted. And I'm sure everyone's aware of our recent workshop with the Board of Supervisors. On the next slide, we talk about the railroads and airports, future opportunities, potentials, and then more. This is also a very long section. Were there any specific comments or suggestions for this element?
On the railroads, was it intended to keep the old rail beds deeper? I didn't quite understand that, Mark.
Well, unfortunately, several, especially on the south end of the county, were formally abandoned.
Right.
And given to adjacent property owners. It's a tough position to be in. We do stress the potential where, you know, we can support cross-border rail operations where there's potential to either reacquire or do something with that. It would be fantastic. Also, passenger rail, especially in the north side of the county, would be wonderful, connecting us better to Tucson and Phoenix. But that's a very difficult thing to deal with because it has to deal with not just us, it's the railroad industry, it's more than us. But it's something, because it's a long-range document, and because historically, it's so important to our county and potentially economically important, that we need to at least acknowledge it and do what we can to potentially bring it back or... potentially bring it back or support, you know, where projects could be supported. That's where we put our effort.
It would be tremendously beneficial to a port of entry.
Absolutely. Yeah.
To have any of that old rail line restored would just be really a boost to that port.
Absolutely.
So I, I saw that you said the words currently Cochise County has no active passenger rail service. That Benson, Amtrak's in Benson, are you going, are you going to fix that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. It's, it's small, but it's a point. Well, anywhere we were just actually, you and I were.
Yeah. Or get off, either one.
Chicago was the first place going back to New York that they listed a stop. So that's a 71-hour trip.
Yes. There's a few different, if you go on the railroads website, there's a few, you can travel all the way around the perimeter of the United States by rail and it goes through Sansmo.
Yeah.
It's that, that rail that goes through there. I forget how many, how long it is and it's like 6,000 miles. It's amazing. And we were just looking at, a friend and I were just looking at this the other day. He said, we've, we lived in, had lived in Sansmo all our lives. We watched when the trains came in, my grandma would come in from up at Globe. She would ride the dinghy from Bowie up to Globe and then back to Bowie and then come, catch the train and come in and get off in Sansmo. And it was really cool. We have, neither one of us really rode a passenger train. And we decided we're going to do it one of these days, pretty soon.
And you can get on in Benson.
Yes.
All right. Our next element is water resource. Like the previous ones, this is a required element. And what we're responsible for is ensuring sustainable water supply. Relying, we rely almost entirely on groundwater, but we also have a little bit of surface water reclaimed, affluent water. We manage water through conservation, recharge product projects, irrigation districts, community water systems. And we support long-term resilience against drought, flooding and population growth. Our goals are fivefold. So keep water flowing. We want reliable water. We want safe water. We need to use it wisely. So that's where we talk about conservation. Four is recharge and restore. And five is planning ahead for water. So just in everything we do, we, we think about water use and it's our responsibility to, to manage it well. On the right-hand side, that's our water resource inventory. As you can see on the bottom right, that's our source of water in Cochise County. It's 99.7% groundwater. So we're, we're pretty reliant on that. On the next page, I talk about, so that's our supply and this is our demand. The, well, ADWR provides records on legally and physically available supplies and they are largely responsible for water and its allocation within the state. We do have some irrigation districts on the right-hand side. I show community water districts and systems. Each of the cities has, has a system and then there, the surrounding areas also tend to have either a water district or water system in place. But what's notable is there is a large part of the county which is not served by either. And that's water. Do we have any questions on that one?
I kind of have a comment. One of my biggest problems with our state representatives, and I know this is a very politically tricky situation, but seems odd to me that there are no restrictions on corporate farms, like dairy farms that are taking millions of gallons a day. No restrictions, and yet we're imposing restrictions on small families, small ranges, small farms. Is there any way to incorporate that language that we will work with our state representatives when it comes to saving water? Or is that something that's better alone?
So we.
Maybe, maybe some, a lot of people disagree.
We can't directly restrict our priorities, water, water use for, for private or, or out-of-state operations because that authority does fall under ADWR in the state. But we can emphasize support for our local agriculture through education, incentives, conservation programs, anything that would promote sustainable water use. But because we're, we're still a political subdivision of the state and through resolutions, we can support just better policy or, you know, suggestions to the state. But we are, we are limited when it comes to the water issue, unfortunately.
Because it seems to me we wouldn't have a lot of the water issues we have if we didn't have these corporate farms that really don't belong in the desert. That's just mine.
Yeah.
Thank you for listening.
Ditto that thought. I do have a question.
I do agree.
You said, is it point three reclaimed on the previous slide? Does that include the recharge basins? Is that what reclaimed is? Okay. So they're the same thing?
Yeah, I believe so.
Is that current?
Yes.
Objection.
You can see the role that water plays in, in our growth as a county and a population base and all that. It's a very fragile, it's the most important of the natural resources. Out in the countryside, it's known as gold. And because of the limitations that it'll have, we're in a system that we depend on surface water. We haven't had snow here in I don't know how many years. And the forecast for this winter is pretty much like last winter and the water table keeps dropping. And yet, all of the different groups and organizations that talk about economic development hire these people to tell them how many more people we're going to have in the area. It's limited by water and we don't have water. In fact, we're losing water. So it puts us in a very difficult position. We can't make it. We can't import it. It is what it is. But all of these mega waterships, the one in New Mexico, Inonimas and all that, ours and others, we only get what falls in the watershed. And it's already, the demands on that are great. So we're not going to have any, the luxury of, of having ample water supplies. It's a very, very complicated issue. And even though we have a lot of people working on it, nobody's come up with the answer.
Because you can't make it.
Yeah.
Okay, energy. And actually, this was a topic of a lot of discussion in our last work session, more than I, I thought. So I did include two new goals based on that discussion. And they're shown on the left-hand side. Previously, we had harness the wind, capture the sun, power smart, power efficient, solar together. The new ones are shovel-ready for a low-carbon future and protecting what matters. So this is in response to our discussion about being a little more diverse when it comes to sources of energy and new technology that's out there. While we can't make certain energy sources come to the county, we can try to make ourselves more attractive and, and ready for it when it comes. So that's kind of what those are about. Protecting what matters is being resilient and having redundancy in the system, which is important. The overview, we talk about electricity. We talk about gas and fuels. We talk about efficiency and access and, and again, it's future opportunities. So planning for emerging technologies, energy storage, low-carbon projects, including potential small batch nuclear adjacent initiatives. So on the right, we talk about the purpose, electricity. On the next page is, we map out gas hazard or liquid pipelines. And the one on the right is energy and transmission lines. Some of these are present, like the Sunzia Transmission Line. The South Line Transmission has not been constructed yet, but it will soon start permitting. And a lot of where these pipelines are, are present is what dictates where, where these projects go. And as you can see, a lot is on the north side of the county, following the I-10 corridor. We can't regulate energy generation sources or energy mix. That does fall on the ACC. However, we can create policy that encourages renewable energy, resilience, recognizing the need for reliable power. And we can support energy planning and coordination. We just can't mandate the use of specific energy sources because that's, that's again, kind of beyond us. But this is a required element and it is very important.
Do you get, does the county get much income out of the pipelines or the transmission lines that cross through the Northern Park? Just the permitting time, just to sell them?
Yeah, no.
They used to get a lot of tax revenue because we did it to school also. It was, you know, affected our taxes at the school. And I can't tell you exactly how many years ago, at least probably 20, at least 30 years ago, those companies all went together and went after getting all their taxes reduced. And I know it highly affected our revenues in our school districts. And I'm sure it did with the county too, because they just really got the taxes reduced on all of that. The railroad was involved with that also and the pipelines all did that at the same time. So that's, the reason I know about it is because of how badly it affected our school revenue. Because we have, as you can see, two major, actually two major pipelines go through our area and the railroad. So yeah, they decided they didn't want to pay all those taxes and they didn't. They had a lot more weight than we did.
It will do.
So does that mean we really, we get nothing?
Especially.
I mean, we just get nothing out of it.
Part of the county gets nothing.
Yeah.
You have very few lines in the southern portion. Most of the power lines are in the northern section. To our area where, where we live. WAPA is our Western Area Power Authority, Tucson Electric Power, Arizona Public Service, HAPL, Arizona Electric Power, and then the distribution. You've got, what, four distribution areas, five distribution areas in the whole of the state, so.
It's on the I-10 corridor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything is, is actually, yes, the major, the people in finance, the major force of money coming in from utilities, railroads and so on, comes from the northern half. But actually, we're kind of frozen on.
Through the northern half of Cochise County. It was on to wherever. And then they, they charge tax there for it once they sell it. But we don't get any, any revenue out of crossing through.
Yeah.
Like El Paso.
Yeah.
It's really interesting. If you go on 191 going towards Stafford, about, not anybody probably here knows where the 10 Ranch is, but in that vicinity of the 10 Ranch, I remember as a kid, there were no transmission lines through there. I had a good friend that owned that ranch. I was on it a lot. Now we have, right in that particular area, there are three transmission lines crossing 191 right there.
Well, and that's always the big question. What good does it do our county? But if we didn't, I, I don't know, maybe there's some way we can tap into that. Data centers? Who knows? Something.
And that might be.
Yeah. You know, I, I had a comment before we leave the energy element. This is just, again, this is my personal reaction to this and I'll, I'll read you what I sent to the staff. There's a sentence in here that I quote, "Together, utility scale, solar and wind base increase energy access and equity, reduce reliance on fossil fuels and strengthen resilience to long-term energy challenges." That, this, this business about this equity escapes my understanding. Power is available to anyone who pays for it. You know, unfortunately, that's the deal. So I don't know how the county can get involved in making sure that everyone has sufficient energy. And I, I object to sentences like that. So I just wanted you all to know that.
You know, we've had several conversations regarding this topic. We went big with solar and wind and all that kind of stuff. But there's conversations out there now, including some of the supervisors and software springs and some other outside interests regarding the nuclear energy. That was always kind of a myth out in the fog somewhere. Now it's coming to the table.
It's exciting, isn't it?
It is because of the impact it'll have. It won't impact our wildlife, our land, all that kind of stuff. And it's doable and it's being done in some parts of the world of it.
Yeah.
So nuclear energy might be an option that's worth us looking into and getting educated to see if we can embrace that.
Isn't that, is that one of the goals?
Just a brief comment on the energy section. I suspect we're going to be seeing more and more applications for data centers.
Oh, yeah.
Which consume tremendous amounts of energy and in fact, so much so that major metropolitan areas that had tried to do away with fossil fuels are now going back to those because they're far more reliable and they produce the amount of energy required, whereas solar power does not.
I, I think you will see that pendulum swing back.
The point being, we need to maintain our, what we have left of, you know, that infrastructure.
You know, we've had a nuclear plant west of Phoenix for a long time.
Calaverty.
Yeah. And.
No problems.
So there's some curiosity and some willingness to revisit all that, to make, to see if there's a supply of energy that will benefit our communities. We're far from everything else along that path. So for us, nuclear energy is probably a better deal.
We're more safer than it was decades ago.
Oh, yeah.
Sure is. So following up on Mr. Limbach's data center, I, I didn't know if that was part of the plan or if it's just a matter of code. I remember when we put together the 2.51.2, very useful for the wind and the solar. Do we need something similar for data centers? Is what I'm quizzing, rather than the comp plan.
Sure.
Because we need to.
Data centers must be a short-lived thing?
That's what's, that's what's going to drive AI.
For energy because of the. Problem for energy because of the, actually, the turbines that are run by the wind and the propellers that are on those are a major problem. Because the propellers are only good for so long and they've got to be replaced. The problem is there is now no use for recycling, nothing to do to recycle. So you see a lot of propellers moving through on wide loads and so on. They're going to replace the propellers that are on the units that are in operation now. There's not a lot of new propellers going in. The biggest thing is the solar. The sun is, is the biggest thing that we're, we're looking at right now. And they talk about the power plant on the west side of Arizona with the, the nuclear plants are the majority of that power goes to California. California has a real problem because several years ago, quite a few years ago, they put in a ruling that there'd be no new power plants built in California. And they're into that. And all of the smaller plants that they had were basically sold. And they were, they're empty, the buildings are there, but all the stuff went primarily to South America. And we, we have a problem with energy in the west coast and
That's the definition of shooting yourself in the foot.
And that's where you see some of these new plants going in. Solar are selling that energy to California.
But for us here, you have to be aware of the fact that the wind generators, the maintenance is atrocious on them.
That's what I
Fifty-five gallon gallons of oil to maintain the lubrication. Solar panels have a longevity issue, awesome.
Yeah.
So when wind and solar go downhill, it makes nuclear a more attractive source for us to explore and see if we can incorporate into that. The maintenance on that is nothing. And the longevity is classified after 30 years. So it goes way beyond 30 years. And here we are, looking at 15, 20-year solar panels and looking at those, the wind generators, looking at six, seven years of that.
Seven, seven years is a long time.
That's it.
For the maintenance of that, yeah.
We're sacrificing a lot of good cattle country and wildlife and all that for that. We can already see the end of that, you know? So we need to be a little more aggressive on what we do with Cochise County. But we need to get educated on that and, and be on the side that, that's going to do what's best for us. Right now, Southern Cochise County, we don't have a leg to stand on. Except to keep fighting this stuff and keeping our land from getting contaminated.
Amen.
Very well said.
Yep, I like it. Do anything else on energy? Hot topic.
Our next chapter is public services and facilities. This includes law enforcement, detention, fire districts, emergency management, health and human services, community services like animal control, libraries. And then it also addresses coordination and planning. So how facilities are integrated with our land use, circulation, water and energy planning to make all our services efficient and resilient. Our goals are on the right-hand side, so safe, secure, ready law enforcement. This was largely, this was written before the recent vote for the DL district. So I kept it somewhat open-ended, how, how that's addressed. But we do touch on detention facilities and jails and their need, how it relates to community needs. Strong fire EMS services for every community. Healthy communities, connected care. Modern humane animal services, libraries, community centers for all and smart connected community facilities. So on the right-hand side, that's where we have our substation detention facilities throughout the county. And on the next slide, we have our fire districts. As we spoke, talked about in the last work session, they do not cover the entire county. They are largely centered on the west side of the county. And that's, that's a challenge. It's, it's concerning. On the right-hand side, we talk about our libraries. Related to that, for public inspection of this document, because libraries are so important to the community. They're kind of a lifeblood. I do intend on printing out hard copies of this and placing them in our libraries for, for public inspection. If somebody wants to come and look at it and instructions for how they can get comments back to us.
I just asked for one correction.
Sure.
On page 103, Sam's mode's not, not spelled with an E at the end.
Oh. Thanks.
I heard a whole discussion about that somewhere. It's so funny, it's like, is it Saint Simon or Saint Simone?
Oh.
I heard a whole funny discussion about it.
You should hear some of the comments we have. It's like when I went to school at Silver City, we were trying to order some T-shirts from a company and they kept telling us they didn't send them to Mexico.
Oh, yeah.
But this is New Mixer. We finally ordered from some other company. It was so bad.
And based on our discussion at the, the last meeting, we did refine a little bit on the, the fire and EMS services in terms of policy. So suggesting a county-wide fire and EMS coverage analysis to identify gaps, particularly in rural areas, develop strategies to expand services. We want to support the districts that are out there, strengthen collaboration, resource sharing, coordinated planning, like our, our role, especially in emergency preparation is, is largely coordination and facilitating support among the different organizations. You know, we can also help fire districts identify and apply for federal, state and private grants for their equipment. And just helping them improve and better support their, their current communities. And hopefully they can expand as needed.
Our issue with our fire department is tapping into money that will help us build a fire station. We seriously need a new station. Ours has even been said it was, they would, should condemn it. But it's what we have to use, so we use it. We keep working on it, but eventually we've got to have another station. We've done a lot of tapping into local, or to grant programs to upgrade our equipment in a lot of ways. And we've got into the Wildland Fire Program, which was very helpful this last year in allowing us to improve some of our equipment and, but we have, when we go to USDA and talk about getting money towards building a fire station, we don't have statistics to back up what they're asking for, for our area. Makes it really hard.
So at the previous work session, Supervisor Antonori floated the idea that fire departments could be countywide. And staff, staff heads exploded and everybody saw a lot of trouble in that. But I like Mr. Antonori for just that kind of explosive thinking. I mean, it helps us think about solutions going forward, so that was funny to watch.
Okay, our next element is housing. This is an optional element, like the last one. But this was identified in the survey as an area of concern and interest of our residents. So this is what's going to guide the county's approach to safe, affordable and sustainable housing. It'll address our supply, our aging homes, any infrastructure gap, gaps, rising costs, housing insecurity. We talk about coordination with federal, state and local programs, how we support renters and homeowners, low to moderate income households, first-time home buyers. And we want to provide targeted assistance for Fort Huachuca personnel as well as colonial residents. Those are special populations. Our goals are to have safe, healthy, energy-efficient homes, build smart, live green, homes for every budget. We want to revitalize our neighborhoods and have affordable homes for renters. Renters are among the most cost-burdened in the county currently. That's not unusual for, for our county, it's statewide. But it's something, it's one of the key takeaways overall. When you compare our housing stock, the prices of our housing stock to that of the state or the nation, we do have lower-cost housing and that's great. But it's still difficult for first-time home buyers and low-income residents to break into the housing market. So within this section, there's a lot of analysis about types of housing, whether it's occupied or vacant housing, renter or owner occupied, different sources of funding. Colonias, these are designated by the Arizona Department of Housing. This was established under federal legislation. And there's additional funding available for properties within these specific areas. So that is identified. I'll also say the county is currently doing an affordable housing study that's underway. It should be wrapping up later this year. In which we kind of take a deep dive into more of the different demographics when it comes to housing and potential solutions for how we can help our residents.
I hope they identify affordable housing in depth because there's, there's so much hidden cost just to get the, the project going.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's huge and it kind of helps kick it out of being affordable.
Yeah, in terms of the diversity of options, what we have a lot of, we have significantly more than the state or nation. We have a lot of manufactured housing, which is an easy way to jump into the housing market. But they tend to depreciate over time. And they don't lead to generational wealth like some of the site-built housing, not nearly as, as much. So it's good to have it within the portfolio, but we want to have a pretty diverse range. So, you know, there's a house for everybody basically out there, regardless of where you want to go. But it's also keeping in mind, you know, you don't move to Seattle for the sun. We know what people come here for and, and people largely favor larger lots and just more space and, and that sort of pattern of development. So keeping that in mind and that specific product, how we can make that affordable for, for more people. Next one is economic development. This is another optional element. But given our declining population and our concerns about our very specific job market here in the county, you can see on the right-hand side, our major employers, it's, it's Fort Huachuca by a mile. It's, it's a lot. And just under that is Cochise County, another government. So largely, we are dependent on the government. So this is a chapter that talks about policies and strategies to foster, to foster a diversified economy. We want to attract and retain businesses, high-quality jobs, workforce development, skill training. We have a lot of veterans with some really good training and education. And also what we have is we attract people when they're ready to retire from the military, they tend to come back and that's great. But we want to keep our young people too. So enhancing quality of life through infrastructure education services, we highlight major employers. We promote growth in some of the other industries that we have, mining, agriculture, technology. These are very strong in the county. We encourage investment in the port of entry, broadband, creative industries. We have an emergency, emerging film industry that we could support. We have a very creative population here in Cochise County. And we've seen New Mexico kind of take off. And we could have the same sort of, you know, film industry and just opportunities for the creative sector as well. Coordinating with federal, state and local programs, including tax incentives. Our goals are powering up the economy. So supporting our military and defense jobs, that's what we have. We want to support those, keep them. Digging for success, that's where we talk about mining and resource opportunities. Those are some of the highest-paying jobs in the state and the country. Growing our fields, that's agriculture, rural enterprise. We have our wine industry, that's pretty neat and it's different. And it doesn't require as much water as, as some of the others, like alfalfa and other, even the nut business. So we want to encourage that sort of agriculture in particular. Our border opportunities, maximizing our opportunity with the ports of entry and trade. It's pretty important, there's not that many ports of entry. So the fact that we're getting one more and it's a commercial one, that's huge. Connect and compete, expanding our broadband access countywide. We're about to, within the next couple of years, get major upgrades when it comes to broadband countywide. Film and fame, that's our creative economy. And building skills, building jobs, workforce development and training. That's where we can partner with different educational institutions like Cochise College to really boost our workforce that's here and keep our younger people also. So on the right-hand side, I talk about the major employers. On the next slide, that's where we talk about the port of entry and a graphic representation of major employers. You can see, I see your Vista and Douglas do kind of stand out in terms of like, that's, on the right, it's kind of a heat map. So the large employers, obviously Fort Huachuca is that big red dot. But you can see some of the health industries, like the hospitals also are shown. And that's economic development. Are there any other questions or?
I think we passed on page 129, the major projects and their prospects. Oh, they're right there, yeah. Is it possible to, or is it even appropriate to add transportation as a major project in infrastructure? Because transportation is going to be so important to the port of entry. And right now, it's inadequate to support decades of growth.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Managing the tra, the transportation that's going to come in.
Yeah, you need the infrastructure.
You've got to have the infrastructure, yeah.
So that's a great idea. I will add that because with every, you can't have economic development without the infrastructure really to support it. And the port of entry, when it comes down to it, it's, that's what it's about, right? As well as trade. So I will add that. Our last chapter of this is related to amendments, implementation. This is required and it's actually a section we reference a lot because when somebody comes in the door, they might want to do a rezoning, they find out they need to do a comp plan amendment, this is the section we go to. And this is, these are the rules, what's required. There's not a whole lot of changes, but it does comply with current state law regarding what's required, defines what's a minor amendment versus a major amendment and what we need to do to get public input and, and all that kind of stuff. So it's, it's a pretty important chapter and I think it's pretty good that it's written. We have appendices, the first one, key terms. That can be important because different things can mean different, are defined differently depending on where they are. So the definitions here relate to how you would view it within a comp plan versus zoning or any other document. So that's why we have key terms when we talk about something like aggregate material, that's the definition right there. The next section is the public outreach where we talk about what we did to engage the community for this process, what was involved. And on the next slide, we had a pretty extensive survey within our websites, actually several surveys. That's where we got a lot of information from and we got a pretty good response rate relative to our county. So I think it's significantly or statistically significant and it's important to, to kind of highlight and it's meant to be viewed at a glance, taken in. Like on the left hand side, this is who answered and on the right hand side, it's, yeah, some of their perceptions of the county and what we need to do, what we do well now and what we need to focus on in the future. And we use this a lot in developing the document. So that is why it's there. The next steps, this is our November, it's a work session, again, not a public hearing, but we do need to, it's basically, there's a 60 day review where it's transmitted to relevant agencies and jurisdictions, big long list of people and they get 60 days. That's also where we put this up for public inspection. So I'll put it on the website as well as physical copies within our office and around the county, within libraries and we'll let people know specifically if they want to view it online, this is where you can view it and this is how you submit comments and, or if they want to see a physical document, they can go see it there and how to submit comments again for that. Once we have that, we'll do a compilation of every comment that we received from the time of this draft document to all the comments we received and then our response to them. And we'll note whether it was an agency or who made the comment. So when it comes back to you, it'll be a public hearing and we'll go through the comments just in general, you'll have a draft showing like an Excel spreadsheet. These are all the comments, this was a response to them, this is how they were incorporated, if relevant. And you will make a recommendation to the board of supervisors. And the board of supervisors will hear it at a subsequent public hearing and they can adopt it as is, or they can send it back to the commission. It's adopted by resolution and then it's valid for 10 years. At 10 years, it must be readopted or updated. So currently we have a comp plan that's currently in effect until we have a new comp plan. So that's basically the process. I wanted to get everybody's thoughts, recommendations before I finalize this. I got, like I said, from both of you and I've got some comments from tonight. I don't plan on posting this probably for another couple of weeks because I want to make just refinements and get all the, the typos and get all the references perfect within this document before we transmit it. But my plan is within the next couple of weeks, like the 20th, not this Friday next, to do that transmittal and get it ready for public inspection online and the physical copies. And that'll be the 60 day review. And again, hopefully February comes back to you guys. But with that, if you guys have any comments, because you know, there's a couple of weeks, any more written comments, by all means, please send them to me. If it's legally possible, chances are I will take those recommendations. And if they're not, I'll, I'll let you know and why.
Sounds like a good process.
Good work.
Yes.
It'll come back in February as a vote. Do you accept it?
It'll be a recommendation again to the board of supervisors, just like we would do in, like any comp plan amendment.
You think you'll retire within 10 years? Would hate to see you go through it again.
Thank you. I appreciate the help and I think we have one more.
One more. We're going to talk a few minutes about public notification requirements. Who's giving that? Mr. Taylor?
I'm here. First, I want to thank Christine for putting these slides together and saving me a lot of time and a lot of work. And they came out great. So I, they're pretty detailed. They have been provided to the commission beforehand and the commission will continue to have access to these slides, obviously. So I don't want to get into the habit of reading any slides. So we'll just kind of skim through these very quickly so we can actually get to the discussion. So public participation is the foundation of community planning and zoning is the implementation tool of the plan and zoning deals with some very sensitive issues, not the least of which are property rights and land use value. Notice requirements are generally driven by state law, which commonly identifies minimums for land use actions. And these typically will, while in all cases, certainly within local governments, within the state of Arizona, involve mailing notices to property owners within a defined notification area, publishing a legal ad, as well as posting the property itself. Arizona revised statutes identifies a minimum notification for rezoning as a zoning area, quote unquote, and is defined as the area within 300 feet of the proposed amendment or change. The zoning regulations follows this template for both rezones and special uses, identifying a radius of no less than, quote unquote, no less than 300 feet for subject parcel boundaries, from the subject parcel boundaries. Staff may expand the notification area to greater than 300 feet if there are compatibility concerns, and this is specifically identified in the zoning regs. Comprehensive plan amendments are different because the comprehensive plan does identify a minimum notification area of 1,500 feet. So in those cases where we have a comprehensive plan amendment and a concurrent rezoning application, that will have been notified to property owners within that 1,500 foot boundary identified in the plan. So here's a little bit about the special use authorization process. Typically the, the best approach when it comes to considering a special use, what is a special use or a conditional use in some jurisdictions, is basically it's where jurisdiction has the ability to pull more intense land use from a higher intensity zoning district into a lower zoning district. It's effectively kind of like a mini rezone. It basically, instead of upzoning the property to allow a new set of permitted uses, the base zoning district remains the same and that one more intense district from a more intense zoning district is authorized during a public hearing. And of course, the commission is the ruling body for those. Certainly applicants or any other aggrieved parties on approval can go to the board of supervisors. And there are 10 factors within section 2.48 of the zoning regulations that the commission is very aware of that are used to evaluate those special uses. The most important component of that is to ensure that those special uses are compatible with surrounding land uses. So the notification requirements generally, and we put this in the slides for all of our docket items. As far as the citizen review process in this, in the zoning regulations, we have the applicants send out notification to property owners identified on the list that we provide. We also provide them a template of the, of the letter itself. And in some cases, we'll actually provide them with the mailing label so they can pretty expeditiously get their letters out. We will mail notices after receiving an official application. The requirement is that these notices have to go out a minimum of 15 days prior to a public hearing. The property has to be posted a minimum of 15 days prior to the public hearing and the legal advertisement has to be posted, excuse me, published a minimum of 15 days prior to the public hearing as well. And there's a sample notification letter on the right hand of the screen and it also includes a QR code for folks to make it easier for them to participate in the process by linking to our website and filling out online comment forms. Some of the required notification elements, typically some of the questions that we would consider when notifying, and this comes from state statute as well as local zoning regulations is where and when is the public hearing? What is being considered? What will be changed? Contact information and other sources of information and how to participate in the process. So again, just to summarize, the applicant mails out citizen review letters a minimum of two weeks prior to submitting their application. And then the county follows up with its three public hearing actions, minimum of 15 days prior. And then of course, the agenda must be posted, I believe it's 24 hours, but Christine always gets the notice out a week early, which is a huge help to both the commission and, and our applicants. So I think this is a, this is a slide that kind of shows how everything works together. The key issue is not just protecting property rights and notifying the public, but it's ensuring that the general public at large has an understanding that this is a transparent process. And even those who are not notified through one of these actions can still participate in the process and we strongly encourage it. I wanted to put in a couple of examples here. I think it's important to notice that we do have the ability to, I guess you could say over notify. It's not based on zoning district, however, it is based on a couple of other factors. Typically it would be how big are the parcel sizes of that area? Are they half acre lots or are they 40 acre parcels? We would also look at the development pattern. Is it relatively rural and undeveloped or is it significantly developed with single family residences? This may appeal familiar, this is a docket from the past on Keeling Road and we did have some folks, and one of the reasons why I picked this one was because we did have some folks that called and said, my neighbor got a notice, but I didn't. Well, that's, that's kind of difficult to avoid that scenario. It's always going to happen because there has to be a defined notification boundary. I think the important thing to notice that in the minimum 300 feet for this case, 18 notices would have been mailed. It increased it to five, it would have, the notice count would have been 30 and 750 feet would have been 50. A good rule of thumb too is that anything, it would be a down zone, would be 300 feet, it would be a lesser amount. Anything that would involve a special use or an upzone to a more intense non-residential district will probably have a larger notification area. This is another example of one that we had, a special use application out uncovered wagon road near Wilcox. These were very large 40 acre parcels and we had folks, many of whom were outside the notification area, but heard about the application and participated actively in the process. The minimum requirement on a special use is 300 feet. We rarely do 300 feet if ever on a special use. It's almost at least going to be double or triple that. But in this case, 300 feet would have yielded 10 notification letters. The half mile notification area for this special use yielded 32. And we, we didn't have 10% response rate on this, even with the expanded notification area. And this would be the last one, this would be Sunsites. So Sunsites has a lot of half acre lots or lots that are about 0.8 acres. The zoning regulation is used to have a notification requirement of one mile. Typically since we're looking at down zones of property where multiple properties are acquired combined, down zone more often than not to participate in the county's honor builder program, we typically will do 300 feet. Very rarely will we do more than that since the, since the minimum notification requirement of one mile was reduced back. A 300 foot notification area would notify 25 property owners, 750 would be 84. One mile, which has been suggested previously for some Sunsites dockets from aggrieved parties who were concerned about housing types, that would be a 2,000 property owner mailing list. So again, I just want to emphasize, we do have discretion to increase these notification areas. Typically it's going to be based on parcel size and the development of the area generally. Down zones, common, we see common down zones to argue for, the notification area is usually going to be 300, 500, 600. Upzones to non-residential districts and special use are typically going to be more, I think 1,000 is a pretty fair starting point. The goal is to achieve some degree of balance in notification, to make sure that we're notifying those folks who will be impacted by the proposed land use without soliciting opposition. We do have some applicants who are concerned about, hey, why are you noticing this so much? All you're doing is making people mad. So that is a little bit of a tight rope sometimes. But again, the notification is staff's discretion on many councils, although we try to be as consistent as possible and is rarely, if ever, determined by the zoning district itself. There are other opportunities for folks to, we publish a great deal of information on our website, we have an email subscription plan too. So there are a lot of other options than just mailing notices and posting the property for folks to participate in the land use action process. So that's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on that? No one? So I wanted to say something about this presentation. First of all, thank you very much for this lesson. Now Jerry and I have talked about learning things here. I hope we can do more of this. I noticed you changed this a little bit, but I'm still going to say what I had in mind to say if you don't mind. You used Gamma AI for this presentation, it's very, very impressive. Does the software ask for inputs such as geographic location? I'll explain. The last slide, slide, at least the last slide that used to be here, so I don't know what happened, but it's interesting. The last slide sent me down a rabbit hole. I noticed the graphic was from the wrong desert. There were Muslim women from the Middle East rather than cowboys and cattle. I like graphics, they set your mind up to understand the narrative. If the software is not responsive to your input though, what other aspects of it are subtly off as well? So I went and I reviewed the entire presentation this afternoon. That's when I realized that you'd fixed something. I reviewed the presentation a second time and could not spot anything wrong, nothing. There was nothing wrong with any of it, no, no misleading statements, nothing. The use of AI will hopefully enhance our efficiency, but I remain suspicious, which is perhaps the perfect combination of skepticism and using a good tool. Artificial intelligence, is it a miracle or a menace? So thank you. This was the first time you brought AI to us and it was weird. So I think we need to stay aware. Thank you.
Is it a miracle or what?
A menace.
Menace.
Does it turn our brains off?
Oh.
It's a boat, I think so. Thank you. Thank you for putting up with my commentary. Planning Director's Report.
Next Tuesday, there are two items. One is San Pedro Ranch Estates Final Platte. You guys heard this. guys heard this in October, the tentative Platte. This will be for the Board of Supervisors. We did get an appeal for the Hereford RV Park. I think we talked about that already. They did request that it be rescheduled. It was rescheduled for next Tuesday. However, they're requesting it be tabled again until March, I believe. And this is the request of the applicant. And it'll be up to the Board whether they grant the tabling, but I assume they will. Next month, we have another RV park. We have guest lodging. We have Adaption Renewables, which is a rezoning. We have a downzoning from RU2 to RU4, and we have an upzoning from R36 to GB. This is in the port of entry area on some property owned by Freeport. So pretty interesting and full schedule for December, our last meeting. On December 16th, at the Board of Supervisors, we'll have Buena Vista Ranchettes abandonment. This is a partial abandonment. These do not go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They go directly to the Board of Supervisors as an action item. And then in January, we have one potential text amendment, and this is in response to changes at the state level, allowing municipalities and counties to review Platte administratively. So I know we just talked about Platte. This would actually free up a little time with you guys as well as the Board and be administratively approved if the text amendment goes through.
That might make sense.
And that's what we got coming up.
Thank you. Commissioners, anything to add? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Let's go home.